The Encinitas City Council passed a resolution last February welcoming refugees and migrants. Probably 100 cities across the U.S. have passed such resolutions or proclamations by now. These resolutions are passed on the sly without the local residents understanding what it's really about or commenting on it. It's part of Obama's New America Initiative and is funded in part by George Soros and the Clinton Foundation. To welcome is to invite. Such resolutions send an invitation to a couple billion poor people around the world telling them that they should come to America and we will take care of them. Terrorist supporters and gang members will come with them. This idea of a welcoming culture was developed on both sides of the Atlantic via the German Marshall Fund. We saw recently what a disaster it caused in Germany and Europe, so why would we try to duplicate that in America? In San Diego County, this idea is the brainchild of Councilmember Tony Krantz. Supporters try to convince other cities to adopt it and even the county, which will bear most of the welfare cost. The residents of cities which have passed these resolutions or proclamations are urged to pressure their councilmembers to rescind them. Currently Solana Beach, Lemon Grove, and Imperial Beach have passed such measures. Imperial Beach has already retracted their proclamation after hearing outrage from their residents and the serious threat of a recall effort.
We are moving along to item 10H. And this is the report from the Subcommittee on Becoming a Welcoming Community. Our contact persons here are Deputy Mayor Schaefer and Councilmember Krantz.
Okay, and so not to disappoint you like I did last week, I have a PowerPoint, which will be up shortly. So, the City Council gave direction in December, created the Subcommittee on Becoming a Welcoming Community. And this is our report to the council. Our goals were to educate ourselves and the community about the Welcoming Communities Initiative, to identify opportunities to make Encinitas and our region as prosperous and welcoming as possible for all residents, and to develop recommendations for further action if any. And so, this was stimulated by a White House Initiative and there's a nonprofit called Welcoming America, which is the main actor in implementing the White House Initiative on becoming welcoming communities. And this slide, which I won't read to you, explains what it means to be a welcoming community. And we'll get back to the specific recommendations for Encinitas in a minute. So, becoming a welcoming community is about recognizing the value to the whole community of creating a supportive environment for everyone who lives here and creating new possibilities for all Americans as employers, innovators, business creators, neighbors, and part of our quilt work culture. And it is not about recruiting, vetting, or harboring immigrants or taking resources away from other priorities. So, we have a history in Encinitas of inclusiveness, of welcoming and supporting immigrants. We have agricultural heritage. Our early settlements came from various places and it's reflected in the names of our communities. And we have a strong and diverse faith-based community right here in our city. So, this is the council direction from December 16th to form a Subcommittee and bring back recommendations. So, here we are. And we had very strong support from all across the region for this initiative. We held two Subcommittee meetings. We had more than 40 attendees from all over the county. And we learned a lot in those Subcommittee meetings. We learned that there's lots of activity already underway. There are lots of organizations providing programs and services in Encinitas and the surrounding area, and these are just a few of them listed here. And we also learned that there are still substantive needs for space, for skills, and for outreach. And so, and there was information provided about the importance of symbolic acts as well. It's not all just about money, but it's about what we say and how we behave and, you know, how we represent ourselves and our values. So, I had two videos. These are very short videos. I went to an event in Balboa Park that was to stand in solidarity with Muslim women who wear a headscarf. And the videos are a young woman who's a high school student born and raised in San Diego talking about her experience. So, it's like 30 seconds long.
Now as a junior in high school, the struggle continues and I find myself worrying about my safety and the safety of my mother every time we walk out the door. We have been chased around and threatened because of the hijab. We were. No one should have to face situations like this, but unfortunately, many Muslim Americans have had similar experiences. It's mortifying opening the television and seeing the faith I practice being demonized and degraded constantly by the news channels and public figures that are supposed to play the role of strengthening society. But instead, they misuse their power to purposefully provoke rage and panic against a group of people who are already looked at differently. Human life should never be classified based on religion or ethnicity.
And then the second one is even shorter.
I've been here for several generations, but we are all equally American. This is not just my country or your country, this is our country. Thank you.
So, I found that particularly moving to hear that. So, from terms of the Subcommittee, we wanted to make sure that we were adding value and not reinventing the wheel because there's so much already going on. And so, the question is, what could we do as a city that would not duplicate effort but would add value to this process? And so, we have a number of recommendations that are listed here. The first was to work with the 211 organization. And for those of you who don't know about 211, it's a nonprofit that has a database of over 15,000 organizations, programs, and services. And you can just dial the phone number 211 or go to the website 211.org and get access to their services. It's not just for refugees and immigrants. It's not just for low-income people. It's anything that you want. You call them and they connect you to the right place. And they have provided an inventory of organizations and programs and services that are available in Encinitas. They gave us a profile of who, what calls they get from people in Encinitas. And we thought it would be helpful to look through that inventory and understand where there are opportunities to fill in gaps that exist. We also, from that, would like to look at where there are opportunities for volunteers to fill some of those gaps, working with the library and social service providers. And for instance, in our Subcommittee meeting, someone pointed out that we have a lot of returning Peace Corps volunteers in Encinitas who have language skills and cultural competence. And perhaps if we gave them an opportunity to make their skills known, they could be of value working with some of these programs. So, could we work with existing, there's a regional organization volunteer match, could we work with them and see if there's a way to specifically highlight these opportunities for people in Encinitas? The county maintains demographic information about immigrant populations, and so we'd like to get information from the county to understand better who is here in our community. We would like to develop a resolution for City Council consideration that would state our commitment to becoming a welcoming community and invite civic business and nonprofit organizations to do the same. And if that's approved by the council, we would share our resolution with other cities in the region and encourage them to adopt similar statements. And there is a resolution, I think, that was already adopted in City of San Diego. No, has it been proposed? Okay, it's being considered in City of San Diego. And we have some model language that we can bring forward if the council is interested in that. We would propose to develop materials in written and electronic format to describe our commitment and provide links to the key service providers. And then, we have been impressed with the Live Well San Diego model that the county has where they have some guidelines. And if you meet these criteria, you get the label of being a Live Well organization or a Live Well city. And they have a logo and you put the logo in the window of your business or in your lobby. And perhaps we could do something similar that would say, "We are a welcoming city, we are a welcoming business," or church, or organization, again, to demonstrate the commitment and to, and when you think about the City of Encinitas and our business community, we didn't actually do an inventory, but I imagine that most of the businesses in Encinitas were started by or owned by either first or second-generation immigrants. We have a vast and diverse community here already. We would propose that we formally join the White House Task Force on New Americans Welcoming Community Initiative. And I printed down there what that actually means because I knew someone would ask. So, joining the Welcoming Cities and Counties cohort requires enrollment forms signed by the mayor or county executive, a point of contact to work with Welcoming America, and the community must pass or be working to pass a welcoming resolution or proclamation. So, if the council supports that, we would take those actions. And then finally, consider sending a proposal to the County Board of Supervisors requesting them to consider a countywide initiative modeled after Live Well San Diego to encourage not just City of Encinitas, but cities, businesses, schools, and other organizations throughout the county to do the same thing. So, that's our report.
Thank you very much. We have a number of speakers.
Yes, we do. I'll call you three at a time. The first three speakers. Caroline Deserds, Tazin Nizan, Erin Grassi.
And thank you all for staying this long. Probably didn't realize you were in for quite a long evening.
Thank you so much for having us to address you. My name is Caroline Deserds. I feel a very emotional attachment to Encinitas because it's where I moved in the 70s, where I met my husband, where I lived when I went to UCSD. I lived right around the corner from here, in fact. But I will say, when I moved here, I was pretty shocked by the segregation and by the kind of casual racism that I saw here coming, I think, coming from outside California because I didn't live in a community that was so close to a border. I had never really seen that. So, I think things are definitely improving, but I really applaud you for doing something proactive, for considering doing something proactive to make Encinitas a welcoming community. I am a member of the executive committees of both the North County Immigration Task Force, who I'm representing this evening, and then I'm also on the Executive Committee of the Farm Worker Care Coalition, which is a North County organization that works with farmworkers. Those are both volunteer jobs because it's important to me. And the North County Immigration Task Force is a grassroots collaborative of nonprofits who work with immigrants and refugees. We have student groups, educators, faith communities, and then individual members. And we work together to educate and advocate for the well-being of the immigrant community in North County, including civic engagement and participation. So, we're already collaborating actually with Encinitas. We're doing AB-60 driver's license classes at the library. And we've done presentations in Encinitas on know your rights, on deferred action for parents of citizen children, and for childhood arrivals. We also work with URISE, which is a unitarian universalist organization that does citizenship and naturalization workshops and screenings. And research does demonstrate that when immigrants naturalize, it benefits not just that family, but the entire community. Because as their wages rise, people spend more, that, you know, they have better spending power, they're more likely to become homeowners. And fully a quarter of the businesses in this country are founded by immigrants. So, demographics are changing, and we can either embrace it and all boats rise together, you know, and we work together, or we're going to have a two-tiered social structure, you know, that doesn't benefit anybody. So, thank you for taking the lead on this, and I just want you to know that we're really excited to work with you to help in any way that we can, you know, whether it's offering educational stuff in the community or helping to bring people to the table so that you can hear what it is that people need to feel welcome. And there's my time. Thank you so much. Thank you for staying up too. Long night.
My name is Tazin. I am here representing CARE San Diego, which is the Council of American Islamic Relations for the San Diego and Imperial Counties. CARE is an advocacy group which charters for the civil rights of the Muslim community. As you all know that we've faced some hard times with people being taken off planes, to denied school entrances, and CARE has been very instrumental in making sure that we as American citizens are granted our civil rights. First of all, I would like to congratulate the City of Encinitas for taking the stand of becoming a welcoming city. This is amazing. I am just very impressed by this council. Ms. Schaefer, your presentation was amazing. I'd like to commend you on the Subcommittee and the work that you all have done. You've already said everything that had to be said, so I don't have anything more to say except please consider this motion and become a welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should note for the record that this was a joint effort with Councilmember Krantz. I'm just going to talk so much.
Hi, my name is Erin Suramoto Grassi. I'm the Human Rights Coordinator at Alliance San Diego. Alliance San Diego is a community empowerment organization with a voter base of 70,000. We're part of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. First of all, we'd like to really congratulate the Subcommittee for its report and to thank the City Council for taking significant steps to move forward in creating a city that is welcoming for all of its community members. Alliance San Diego does a lot of work throughout San Diego County around immigration. Some of the work is around immigrant integration, and that includes citizenship workshops, DACA workshops, and we have residents from all over the county, including Encinitas, who actually come to these workshops. So, we're really excited that you're taking this stance and that your leadership, we're hoping, will actually lead the rest of the county to do very similar actions. So, thank you again. We hope that we can collaborate with you guys in the future, and we look forward to the City of Encinitas becoming a welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speakers, Patricia Serrano, followed by Ramla Sahid, followed by Orin Robinson.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Patricia Serrano, and I'm the Chair of North County Immigration Task Force. And my friend Carolina said all the things, amazing things that we did and we do in our group. I'd just like to say and commend you for taking the steps to be the first city in North County to be the welcoming community. And I hope more cities in North County follow your steps. My husband used to live in the city for maybe 15 years, and he works for the same amount of time in Paul Ecki Ranch. So, this is a place that is very familiar for me, and I'm so glad that you are taking the lead in this important issue for us. I'm an immigrant myself, and it's so, so powerful to see people like you taking these steps and being more welcoming communities because all know that North County is very hostile with immigrants. So, I really thank you all of you for taking these steps to becoming a welcome city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ramla Sahid, and I am the Executive Director at PENA, Partnership for the Advancement of New Americans. I'm a refugee woman from Somalia, and I'm also an Advisory Board Member with SDIRC or the San Diego Immigrants Rights Consortium. This collaborative is comprised of 36 organizations and includes the interfaith community, labor, community members, and is the largest coalition in San Diego working on immigrants' rights and is one of the most, one of the strongest coalitions in the state. We're thrilled to be here to support the work of the Subcommittee and urge you all to adopt all seven recommendations. I want to thank you for your leadership, the opportunity to be the first city to really have a significant discussion and consideration on this matter. Tells a lot about the values of the city and values of this council. And thank you all just for really standing with refugees that are deserving of our compassion, right? And if I can be of any assistance, I am here to support. You raised a really important question earlier about housing. We actually have the Housing Federation as a coalition that's really working on statewide housing policies. MAC Project is another group that's working on housing. And so, it's really important that we're identifying what resources exist and how do we link the existing infrastructure so that we're providing a more powerful opportunity to really welcome newcomers, new Americans, in a way that helps them thrive and not just be, right? So, thank you.
I'm impressed you were paying attention to that conversation. Thanks.
Next speaker is Orin Robinson, followed by Nikki Mazzaroli.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Orin Robinson. I'm also with PENA, Partnership for Advancement of New Americans. And we're kind of unique in the state of California. We're the only refugee public policy research and community organizing hub in the state. And so, I'll just be really quick. Before I came to San Diego, I actually didn't know hardly anything about refugees. But as San Diegans know, San Diego has a huge history, a very strong history with refugee resettlement. In fact, the largest ever refugee resettlement operation in history happened just up the street at Camp Pendleton right after the Vietnam War when 50,000 refugees were resettled in the span of six months. And so, flash forward 40 years, and now about 1 in 40 San Diego County residents is a refugee. We're the number-one destination in the most recent years for refugee resettlement in the state, and these numbers are strong and they're growing. And so, just to echo what everyone said, I think it's tremendous that the Encinitas City Hall, the City Council is considering these actions and put in so much work to develop with the community. PENA was at both of the Subcommittee meetings, and we really appreciate the vibrant discussion. So, we also just support all of them. We want to work together with the recommendations and just thank you for being a leader in a time when leadership is so needed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Council, for discussing this important initiative this evening. My name is Nikki Mazzaroli. I'm a Program Officer at the Leach Tag Foundation, and the Foundation is proud to be a member of the Encinitas community. Our city has a strong history of diversity, which you've heard from other presenters this evening. Our agricultural and horticultural heritage engaged and brought many people from many different backgrounds to this area. As the industry grew, we relied on a diverse and multinational workforce. The Leach Tag Foundation is particularly proud to own the former Paul Ecki Ranch. During World War II, after the order to inter the Japanese, Paul Ecki Sr. stepped forward to offer his Japanese neighbors, many of whom were farmers, space to store their belongings in the barn-to building at the ranch, a brave act considering that he was of German descent and under some suspicion himself. His leadership enabled his neighbors to return quickly to their professions and lives after the internment, which we all regret. These are the kinds of values that we feel Encinitas should stand for. These are the kinds of values we will convey through adopting the recommendations that have been set forth tonight. We are so proud to be members of Encinitas community. Together, we can strive for a more welcoming, safe, creative, sorry, creative and economically prosperous city. On behalf of the Leach Tag Foundation, we heartily endorse the recommendations presented in the Subcommittee report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that does conclude speakers, and then I do have four individuals who registered support but did not wish to speak, and that was Andrea Kraft, Alex Huber, Rosa Flores, and Angelina Cruz.
Thank you, and we appreciate you taking the time to speak with us tonight and your active participation in the Subcommittee meetings as well. Councilman Krantz?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't sure where this would go when I brought this issue up as a Councilmember-initiated item, having been moved by a presentation at the Leach Tag Foundation, and I have found the experience to be quite uplifting, and I thank you all for making it that. Working with Council Deputy Mayor Schaefer on the Subcommittee really did validate the impression that I had that we are part of a very welcoming community. And I think that in addition to identifying that and having such broad participation, I think we actually established some pretty good recommendations for moving forward and how to make the process of integrating refugees and immigrants into our community. So, I look forward to continuing. Hopefully, the council will agree that the recommendations are the right direction to go. I was impressed by 211 San Diego. They do work for San Diego County, and so they have quite a bit of resources to be able to provide every resident of the county. They did run a report for us, which I was kind of surprised to see that 211 San Diego received, they made 2,162 referrals for people who live in Encinitas. 2,162 referrals, total needs 1,879, and the total clients was essentially 1,200. And they list the ethnicities and the needs that they had. And, you know, it was kind of surprising to me, and I think it's important for us to keep in mind as we go about our business that while we don't have a whole lot of social services that we offer through this city, the city is an important conduit for community members to get information and to get to the resources that we have. I also want to applaud our librarians up on the Hill. We have some fantastic resources available for a broad swath of our community, and they do great work up there in collaboration with many of you. And I think that's the key word here is collaboration, so I would hope that we can continue the collaboration.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blake Spear?
Yes, thank you to the speakers and to the Subcommittee. I just, I had a question and then just a comment. So, do we have even a rough idea of how many immigrants or refugees live in Encinitas? Was that the 1,200 clients that, so do we have any, I mean, I know there are San Diego-based organizations that came to us today, but do we have any sense?
We asked the county to provide, and we haven't gotten the information from them yet, so we don't know. And part of our scope is not just people who have recently arrived, but people who may have arrived here many years ago and wouldn't show up on any registry because they're not, you know, just recently here. But we have a very diverse community, and not everyone in the community feels incorporated and feels engaged. So, we're trying to get the number that you're asking for, but we're also trying to look more broadly than just very recent arrivals.
One of the elements that I was particularly interested in that I didn't see highlighted, although it was mentioned, is this, if, depending on how involved we get in this, that we focus on the citizen, American citizenship outreach. So, I think it's really important that we help people adapt to American culture and the importance of some of the things like gender equality and freedom of speech and the press and the power of being able to vote. General civics and citizenship, things that are more values-based than like how to get a driver's license or know your workers' rights. So, I don't know where that fits in here. It wasn't really called out exactly, but I think that that's a really important component to me, is helping people integrate and not be segregated in their own community with their own community values and not adapting to our culture. So, I would like to see some focus on that personally.
Councilman Muir?
Thank you. I think we have a very loving, compassionate, and abrasive community. I don't think it's abrasive but embrace of community. And when I first read this, the staff report and heard about it, my first question is, what's the problem statement? And my understanding was, I think it was created based on a workshop or a community presentation that Leach Tag had on the acceptance of Syrian refugees. I think also Tony had some concerns about the country's partisan rhetoric on immigration. I agree that the partisan rhetoric is bad on both sides, and so I'm not going to defend anybody on that. But my question again is, I don't really see a problem, a real problem statement here. We have many issues that we deal with in the community. We have, we just heard about safer outs of schools. We still have the beacons. We have the housing element. We just talked about the real quarter master plan. And so, for me, I think we have a lot of great nonprofit organizations. We just, we talked about 211, and I actually took a tour down there, and I was very impressed with the 211 facility and what they do. And the examples that some of the present people spoke earlier talked about the collaboration examples. And so, for me, I think the, we have many nonprofit groups, the Leach Tags, the 211, and other... and others that are addressing this issue. And I continue to say, I don't know what the big issue, I don't think we have an issue in our community. So I encourage us to reach out and be a part of that, but I really don't know what that means, because I haven't, I haven't seen anything on the staff report that talked about any kind of cost or resource requirement for doing this program. So that's where I'm at with this. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. We're not, what we wanted to do before we started developing specific resource analysis or anything was to just get a sense from the rest of the Council, do you want to even keep talking about this or doing anything? And the idea is not to duplicate efforts. There are lots of organizations doing amazing work in the citizenship training and English language training, and acculturation are all services provided by, among the various organizations that exist. What we're talking about is, can we, at no cost to the city in all likelihoods, I think we can find resources if there's a small, if there's a cost to doing some of these things, which is very small. I mean, passing a resolution has no cost implications. It doesn't compete budget-wise. We issue proclamations all the time, and so it's really just a statement of values. It's not a budgetary impact. But we wanted to check in first and not go too far without getting a sense of the Council as to whether you wanted this effort to continue. But all we're really talking about is just shining a spotlight on things that are already happening. For one example, the librarian said that they offer lots of services, but they never have any space, and they could do more if there were more meeting rooms. And so one thing that this process could do is just put information on a website somewhere, or put it in our newsletter, saying if any nonprofit, if anybody has space that they could make available for citizenship classes, the library might be able to expand doing some more. The library's trying to do as much as they can. We can just help them be another voice to connect, make connections in the community. We're not talking about hiring staff at the city, or undertaking new programs that would be the city's responsibility. What we're talking about is just being facilitators and being visible, and being witness to all this, this good work that's being done in the community, and letting people know that it's there. So that's, anything that we come back, if the Council directs us to keep doing this work, we would identify any resources that were required, and we think we could find those resources from the community and not have to take it out of city funds. And I'd like to move that we extend the meeting...
Oh, thank you.
Till maybe 10:30.
Then I'll second that, and let's vote.
Sorry, it's a technicality, but we have to do it.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Councilman Krantz.
So, so the, so sometimes there's a, when you're looking to have a problem statement, it's a little difficult when you look at the segment of the community that we're trying to bring in. And it's not easy to identify and to define what their problems are necessarily, although I think everybody recognizes that we have some problems with homelessness, we have some problems with substance abuse, we have some problems with, you know, people finding jobs. The list is long. I did the homeless count in Encinitas, and, you know, there's a homeless population here. And this is not, you know, I know that my, the presentation that I saw at Leach Tag was about the Syrian refugees, and it wasn't about bringing them to Encinitas. It was just about the plight of the Syrian refugees. And it just reminded me that there are people in our community who could use a hand up, and they, we have some great organizations that are providing that. The city really isn't providing it. The county is, and we have some volunteer organizations that are doing a lot of work. But I thought, as leaders, it was important that we make a statement from, you know, as a council, that we are a welcoming community. And we talk a little bit in the PowerPoint and in the staff report about symbolism, and I'm perfectly willing to acknowledge that some of this is just symbolic. I think it would be worthwhile for the county to pursue a symbolic measure as well, because I think that it's important to tell people who are the less fortunate and the new to our community that there is a place for them to go and get the resources and get some direction. So that's, I think, was the important part of this whole process, is that the White House Initiative on Being a Welcoming Community talked about multi-sector collaboration. And as the government sector here in Encinitas, I thought it was important to collaborate with these groups, which are a diverse group from all around the county, and I thought it was important that we pursue a formal recognition of a relationship with those groups.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and just, maybe it would be useful to go through the recommendations one by one, but, for instance, recommendation number five, developing materials. I think we could get money from either the county or from one of the organizations, funding organization, to pay for translation into various languages. And really, people come to the library, they come to City Hall, they're new in town, they go to one of the 101s or the chamber, and wouldn't it be nice to have a brochure that they could say, if you are new to the United States, not just new to Encinitas, here are some of the services around, and provide links to these other organizations? We're not proposing that the city take on the responsibility for doing the programs, but just to help make things known. And what people said in our Subcommittee meeting was just to have an elected official show up, just like we were talking about Sacramento, that it makes a big difference for an elected official to go to Sacramento and speak on behalf of a piece of legislation. It makes a difference for an elected official to go to an event and just be present there. You know, we have a mayor's prayer breakfast every year. You know, we do that not because we have a problem statement, but because it's an important part of our culture, and having the mayor stand there with interfaith leaders is meaningful to people, and so this is just an extension of that. So do you want to go through the recommendations one by one, or we can just...
We may. I'll just insert some comments quickly before we move forward. And number one, when I read this, thank you for bringing forward the report, I was really proud and really quite impressed by the depth and the services that are provided throughout the entire county. So I really do applaud many of you who are here tonight that represent organizations that are doing great work throughout the county. I learned more about new acronyms and new organizations that I had no awareness of, so I'm really thankful to have taken the opportunity to learn more about the services that are provided throughout the county, and I applaud you for all of your efforts, and certainly inspired by many of your organizations. I think it's a success story looking at 211, and the number of outreach cases that they've had from our own community. I think that demonstrates a real success story. I'd be troubled if I saw, you know, a couple attempts to access 211. I'm very thankful that it seems as though that 211 system is working, and that's great. It's providing a valuable service, valuable referrals throughout the entire county. I think where I'm conflicted is that I just am not convinced that we're the preferred facilitator of this process, because the bulk of the money's coming from the county. And I would almost prefer to see the facilitator of this be a nonprofit organization, perhaps in our own community, and Leach Tag Foundation, that, you know, this is something, it's a real passion area, and I'd really like to see a good nonprofit organization in our community serve in that facilitator role. And I almost feel like it's kind of an awkward role of the city government to be providing that facilitator role. So that's where I think this really needs to head, is with a different facilitator, perhaps from the nonprofit world. And again, I want to express my extreme appreciation for what you're offering to our communities. Councilman Krantz.
I don't think it says anything in there about being a facilitator. I think it says multi-sector collaboration. So our role in this would be quite small. We don't have the resources, we don't have staff that are dedicated to it, but we have a dedicated social service network here in the county, and all we do is provide, we get these calls, whether we know it or not, we haven't gotten to the point where we have counted the calls. We don't know how many of our calls get. I think that the question came up, and if a call comes into the switchboard, it gets referred to Nicole Piana. And so we're getting the calls, and I think that it's important that the city, instead of just washing their hands of any responsibility, that we participate in the collaboration as a full partner. Again, it's not going to take resources, it's not resource-intensive, because we're not going to provide any resources. And most importantly, I think, is the proclamation, the resolution that we would pass.
Okay, so Council, you have before you, in the interest of moving forward, recommendations from the Subcommittee consisting of items one through seven. Is there a motion to consider all of them at once, or how would you like to handle the recommendations?
Here, I'll move that we approve all of them. I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Absent further discussion, let's vote.
And the motion carries. Gaspar and you're voting no.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us this evening.